I'd like to call the, to order the regular meeting of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen for Tuesday, September fourteenth, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
We use the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic, which stands one day.
Under God.
Trish, can we get our roll call?
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe. Alderman Phipps.
Yeah.
Alderman Tar.
Yeah.
And Cassetti.
Yeah.
Alderman Janetti. Alderman Spigaro. Alderwoman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Yeah.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mammon.
Here.
President Schur.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman DeLibro. Nine present.
All right. I'll declare a quorum. All right, before we start, just a little bit of bookkeeping, you all have the agenda. Like to remove old business number one, which is the twenty-two Silver Hill Road. The applicant pulled the application for the easement, so we'll remove that from the agenda. So we have two sets of minutes to consider the July thirteenth, 2020 meeting, 2021, sorry.
Motion to accept, motion to accept those minutes.
Motion set by Mammon, second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, and the second set of minutes is our last meeting, August tenth, 2021.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mammon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Our public session, we have a public session, quick reminder, my three rules, please introduce yourself, using your name and address for the public record. A reminder that this is not a question and answer session, but you can make a statement on anything, and please limit your responses to three minutes or less as we have dozens of items to discuss and vote on tonight. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Yes, I do.
First hand I saw up is, I see Stan, and then I see Chris. So we'll go start with Stan, number one, and Chris, number two.
Good evening, my, my name is Stan Kapinos, I live at eight Krueger Court in Ansonia, and it's unfortunate that we were not able to have the meeting in the automatic chambers. I was looking forward to that, but these are the challenges we face. Secondly, I'd like to thank the mayor and President, President Josh or President Schur, I'm not certain which President you are, for helping to arrange meetings to facilitate some of the activity at one hundred and twenty-six Ford Street. If you do not know, over the weekend, the maintenance crew came and dismantled and put the shed, is what I'll call it, shed structure into a dumpster for, I assume, removal. That's a step in the right direction from where I'm standing, and part of what I'd like to know, and this is just what I'd like to know, is where would I go to find the blight order? So that I know what is pretty much expected to be done in the cleanup. Secondly, I sent an email to, to Josh and Dave, the president and the mayor, regarding another concern I have with fire safety. And to make a long story short, I spoke with the, on a federal level about fire safety, I spoke with the state fire marshal, I spoke with our fire marshal, and I have some concerns about what's happening in the building with regard to fire safety. My understanding is the building is heated with gas. From talking with our fire marshal, it's been a long time since he's had any kind of correspondence with the management company, maintenance company, or the ownership, and he was a little uncertain about what the status was there, and I'd like to see if we can move in a direction to clarify that. I'm more than happy to continue my communication with the fire marshal, but it would be helpful if I had your support in moving the ball, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapinos. To answer your first question, the building department.
Okay.
Should be able to give you a copy of that, any, any of the blight notice. And then the second question, I just saw your, your message, and you had reached out to our fire marshal, and we can follow up. We have three aldermen who are members of the Fire Commission, Alderman Yalman, Alderman Cassetti, and actually myself.
Okay.
And we can, we can interface directly with the fire marshal and sort of get caught up to speed as to, as to that conversation, and hopefully keep the dialogue going.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming.
You betcha.
All right, next was, where was it, Chris, Chris M.
Yes, since the.
Please identify yourself.
Well, Chris, I live at twenty-two Silver Hill Road.
Thank you.
We had just shelved the item that was up for discussion, but I am going to be working on my stairs, which is on my property, and, you know, it's attached to that, and I would assume that since this is shelved, that this, that this would stay in effect for all parties.
I can't read that from here, here, how many miles are you away from me? This is stop work. I'm going to defer to Corporation Council on this. Any insight on this?
So I couldn't really see that, that's a stop work order?
Yes.
That's just pertaining to this project that was before the board, that's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, since we shelved it, then this would.
It's not an overall stop work, but you know.
It's pertaining to the project, but I'll get clarity for the building department tomorrow on that, and we'll give you, we'll contact you, so you know crystal clear what, what the meeting is. When was that posted?
On. May nineteenth, 2021.
Okay, so yeah, let me review with the building department, because you know, that order obviously came out a bit ago. Let's, let's understand what the current status is right now, so I'll talk to the building department tomorrow morning.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public wishes to speak, either wave your hands or raise digital hands if you're able to do that? I'm going to look around here, there's a couple pages of people. Second call, anyone from the public who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen tonight?
Hello, Diane Valentino.
Yes, go ahead, please, name and address for the public record, please.
Okay, Diane Valentino, I'm from Cheshire, Sturbridge Court. I'm an accountant working with Larry Safran and Stelray on a property tax issue. I think Larry is on, and I thought he was gonna jump on ahead of me, but I guess I will take over. Um, we have an issue with machinery and equipment exemption, and during COVID, there was an issue, we filed the property tax report on time. We have a stamped copy, there he is.
I apologize, but I, looking at the agenda, I thought we were in the new business category.
We do have you on the agenda under new business, if you, if you guys are able to hang out, we'll, we'll take that up, and you guys can, we'll give you an opportunity to pipe in then.
That's perfect.
All right, thanks. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak tonight? Second call, anyone from the public? And third and final call, anyone from the public who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen? Seeing none, I will close the public session and move on to public official session, Mayor Cassetti, hit it.
Yes, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. First, I want to take a moment to reflect on the twentieth anniversary of the absolute tragedy of September eleventh. This past weekend, we held a ceremony for the victims and families of those lost, and I would like to thank the Gordon Vasselli American Legion Post fifty and adjutant Patrick Henry for helping organize the event. If you would now join me in pausing for a moment of silence in honor of the memory of those lost on September eleventh, and also for those thirteen servicemen who were needlessly killed in Afghanistan last month. Thank you. Now I want to share some good news about the city of Ansonia. Let's start with Restaurant Row. I hope everyone knows by now that we have two new additions this past week alone. Taco Central and the Ansonia Deli, both located on Lower Main Street. This was the first time I attended two ribbing cuttings ceremonies within twenty minutes of each other, but the food was worth it. Unfortunately, it was also the first time I couldn't eat all the dinner my wife prepared for me when I got home. Well, maybe not the first time, wait a minute, is this being recorded? All right, all right, all right. Now, now let's talk about some other improvements. You may have noticed a little video posted on the city website this afternoon, where I talked about improvements in store for Nolan Field with the fifth Ward Alderman Joe Yalman in Chicago Rivers. I am pleased to announce that we have been approved to invest federal dollars for recreation enhancements. This gives us the opportunity to give the playground and basketball courts at Nolan Field some much. And upgrades. And while we're at it, I heard there's some interest in something called the splash pad. Actually, as many of you know, I've been looking at the possibility of building a splash pad for several years. With funding now available, it looks like we're ready to get our feet wet. Our engineer will be putting together plans for the improved park, including plans for a splash pad within the coming month. Now let's ride the waves of progress downtown, where our Ansonia Cultural Commission is planning the biggest and best harvest festival ever on Saturday, September twenty-fifth. Right now, Cultural Commissioner Chair Ralph Villers and Events Director Rich DiCarlo are reporting over a hundred vendors. We will have food, music, and way more. And of course, I'll be wearing the David S. Pumpkin suit. Finally, let me highlight a new project. As you all know, it was fun to, it, it was fun to stay at Ansonia's very own YMCA. And Ansonia was sad to see the Y leave its longtime home on twelve State Street. But as the village people say, there's no need to be unhappy, because Primrose Companies, in conjunction with John Geddis, will be redeveloping and revitalizing this site for a husband and wife tenant that will be bringing two businesses to the former YMCA building. The first business is an already successful infant aqua, aquatic program called Infant Aquatics Connecticut. That provides survival swimming lessons for infants and toddlers. And the second is a new sports program involving men and women's youth wrestling and a startup health and fitness club. Combined with these two new business initiatives, will bring one hundred new employees to Ansonia. Now we have a lot more news, but I can't talk all night, so here's my staff and more information and progress for you. Thank you, and God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you did not start a Village People trend, because that's going to be a tough one to continue throughout the night. But with that, I'll pass this on to our Macho Man Corporation Council.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You've already continued it.
And that hereby ends the Village People for the night.
Well, to follow up, Mayor Cassetti, on the YMCA, former YMCA developments, that is renovation being done right now by Primrose Company that has actually some more revitalization plans in mind for that site. And in connection with that right revitalization effort, that will see a good amount of monetary investment in the site, Primrose would like the city of Ansonia to consider a tax incentive. And of course, as you know, we have a tax incentive program that allows an abatement from the increased, increased amount of taxes that result from a revitalization effort like this. When money comes in to rehab these buildings, the assessment goes up, and we do have a program that mitigates that in the short run to entice further investment, further dollars coming in. And so in order to review that proposal, President Schur, I would like to request that we call a meeting of our Tax Incentive Committee that consists of members of the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Apportement and Taxation, and our Economic Development Director. And I'd like to see if we could have that committee meeting within this month, within the month of September, to evaluate the Primrose proposal. Beyond that, I can give a brief report on the Armory. Again, very, very thankful to Griffin Health and President Pat Charmel and his team for this project, which is going to open likely in mid to late October. And I can really say that when we see the Armory again, it's going to be nothing like what, what we remembered. This is another wonderful win for recreation opportunities in the city, and it's going to be wonderful, really, to have really an old facility all new again. Thanks also to Public Works for their assistance. They've been, of course, running back and forth between Griffin and their contractors, making sure that everyone has access to the building and making sure the building is secure and ready for these improvements. So we're, we're going to announce a little more on that later, including our free throw challenge that we are certainly advancing to Griffin at the grand opening. So President Schur, you're going to have to select some of the city's top sharpshooters, because we do want a Ansonia versus Griffin free throw competition here. Not sure, you know, what the winner is going to take home, but significant, because it's going to be the first event at the new Ansonia Armory. I want to take a second to address the new crosswalk law that's about to go into effect for Connecticut. I mean, the past, we've talked about the importance of pedestrian safety, and in particular, the importance of adhering to crosswalks as a driver of a motor vehicle, looking out for pedestrians. Well, now there's going to be a new five hundred dollar fine for failure to stop or slow down if a pedestrian is in any portion of the crosswalk, steps, or any portion leading up to the curb or entrance of the crosswalk. And the law makes it clear that something like waving a hand into that area, extending a cane, that's going to count. So we want to stress, in advance of this law going into effect, as a driver, please look once, look twice as you approach a crosswalk. It's not just about who's in the middle of the crosswalk, it's about who's about to cross and who's trying to get your attention, and failure to respect that, and it's a failure to slow down for a pedestrian signaling that they need to cross, that's going to carry a five hundred dollar fine if you are caught. So FYI. Upper House, we are working along with the Upper House's council on terms for a long-term lease and reinvestment plan. We think it's a great partnership, we're looking forward to it moving ahead, and we're pretty close, so we're hopeful that by the next meeting, we'll have an actual lease agreement for this board to act on. And finally, of course, I want to thank the ordinance committee for their work again. They got a landlord accountability law passed just last month that's going into the newspapers now to make it official. And just last week, actually just yesterday, they finalized a law which adds a municipal penalty to a state law that requires registration of motor vehicles to occur in a timely manner. So we're talking about people that have vehicles registered out of state, they moved to Connecticut, or specifically, they moved to Ansonia, they need to register their vehicles in a timely manner. And now there's going to be a municipal penalty for failing to do so. A lot of times, you know, cities will rely on the state to enforce its statutory code, but that's a little difficult sometime for the state to do. It's a little easier for a municipality to do it, and of course, the consequences are pretty profound when you talk about the lost tax revenue that comes when we're not capturing these out-of-state plates, being driven by Ansonia residents on a regular basis. Of course, that's not everybody, but we want to make clear that we're going to be enforcing this, and we're going to also be giving people notice before this happens about what those timelines are, and making sure that they have a fair shot at getting registered within the time that the law allows. So other than that, we have some important matters to discuss in executive session. I can take any questions, and if not, I'll see you then.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the aldermen for Corporation Council tonight?
One point of clarification, John had talked about the ordinance, that's actually on our agenda for a vote tonight. We, so we passed that out of committee to come to the full board for tonight.
Yeah, that's. Unregistered one is the one that's on for tonight, they finalized it at the ordinance level, and it's here for, for final approval tonight.
Yeah, I want to thank that committee for, for their work on that, that's great. So any questions for Corporation Council tonight from the aldermen?
Yeah, I have a question. John, who's, who's responsible in the city for enforcing that? Does that go to Mr. Grabash to, to put a plan together on how we're going to choose to enforce that?
I would actually say that although David Grabash is going to play a part in obviously crunching the information, it's really going to be to the building department to do enforcement. We could also utilize our police resources to the extent they're, they're available, but in the communities where this is being, where this program is being enacted and run, it's generally through civil enforcement, and in this case, it would be our zoning building slash blight type enforcement. It is a municipal citation, so we don't need an officer to give a violation. We simply need to have reliable information that someone is residing in Ansonia with a, an unregistered plate past the timeline. And we talked a bit about ordinance, at the ordinance committee, about the tools that we would need. Obviously, you know, an officer, an enforcement officer that's seeing these cars parked regularly at homes, that's one way to do it, but we are hopeful about recommending a plate reader the next city budget, and that would give us a, an enhanced ability to monitor where these unregistered vehicles are parking, that's what the larger cities do. Waterbury has particularly aggressive program, and the plate readers are usually the cornerstone of that. But we're also not as large as Waterbury, so in the short term, just our eyes on the street are going to go a long way in terms of getting compliance here.
Do we know how big that population is just yet, or do we have any, any estimates?
I think David has some estimates, but I think there's no real concrete information, I think, until we get the eyes on the, on the street.
Perfect, thank you.
Additionally, Tony, I'll just add, and this is part of the discussion, is that additionally, the landlord ordinance that we passed last month will also help collect some of that data as that information's flowing in, we, we'll, we'll get the information on the license, on the licenses of the cars at the particular residences, and we'll be able to send them notice and ensure that they're, they're registering in a time and fashion as well. So it should minimize that number whereby the enforcement and the penalty doesn't need to be, is not going to be a lot, there's not going to be a lot of violators out there, hopefully, because we're going to be able to provide enough notice in advance, and then a little bit of a grace period there to allow people to get into compliance, so that we don't have to penalize them.
Yeah, it just seems that the number of New York plates have, have gone up drastically for, for those of us who plate watch at all, so, thanks.
Any other questions for Corporation Council tonight?
Yes.
Go ahead.
President. I had first, I was asked to deliver an announcement, I figured it's going to be as good as any. Our Assistant Superintendent of Schools had every intention of being here tonight, you know, to make a report, but at the last minute, apparently, he had a private, personal issue that he had to attend to that took precedence, and my son asked me to deliver this message. He will try to get here if he can, but otherwise, please excuse him, because it was beyond his control that he can't be here. So I have delivered the message, and so now, I had a couple of questions. The mayor shut his light off, so I'm presuming John probably can answer them. The tax federal, federal money that's coming for Nolan Field, where's that coming from?
So there are federal funds coming from the state, and of course, communities have been taking a look at these funds to see how we can utilize them, what approved uses there, there might be for these funds. And again, that's where we're very pleased to report that there will be some ability to use these funds for recreation. So these are federal dollars allowable for recreation. I think the idea here is investment back in the community to help alleviate some of the negative impacts that we've suffered over the last year.
No, I understand, are these ARP, the ARP funds, or are they something else?
They're ARF funds.
The, okay.
That's exactly what they are, and she'll talk a little more about sort of what the parameters are for those funds. But again, we were very relieved to clarify that recreation could be a, a use here, an appropriate use.
Okay, I, I was just a question. Another one that I had with respect to John, your, your reminder of the crosswalk initiatives that are going to be coming forward. And I was just reading an article last night, that the other side of that coin that we experience a lot of in downtown Ansonia is you're going to get whacked a five hundred dollar fine if you try to run over somebody to crosswalk, but jaywalkers are also subjected to arrest and a fine. And there's a lot of those, as we know, in our city. They're all over, we're guilty of every one of us, I think, for jaywalking. And, you know, in all fairness, if we've got to be alert to crosswalks, then we somehow got to get out the information and to, hey, guys, the crosswalks are there, use them. Otherwise, you know, bad things can happen. I was, we just got back from Maine up in Agunkwit. Any of you people that are up there that have gone to Agunkwit, people cross all over the place, and cars are stopping left and right, and it's almost a way of life up there, that if the pedestrian is out in the road somewhere, the car stops. But that could be a unique situation, but I, the jaywalkers crossed my mind, and I just thought I'd throw it into the pot.
Yeah, that's a good point, and that is the other side of the coin, you know, if we're going to be having further penalties on, on drivers that don't pay attention at crosswalks, we don't want to make it even more difficult for drivers to be jaywalking, right? And that's, jaywalking is dangerous because of just that, there's no crosswalk to give any indication that you could be coming out of the road. In Ansonia, it's pretty relevant because of how downtown is transforming. We are getting busier and busier with every restaurant we add, with every business that's coming to Ansonia, we're increasing the people working here, visiting, and soon, living here. So it's going to be more important than ever to live with, along with everyone else, and that means respecting crosswalks, and yeah, resisting the temptation of trying to make it there a little earlier by not using the crosswalk, you know, should be using the crosswalks just like in any other city as it gets busier and busier, you know, we're going to need that to keep safe.
I, I agree, sure. And the other question I have is our library, in particular, is still closed, and we're the only one in the valley that is closed, and I was wondering if there is some way we can get the library open again to the public. Closest people can get is inside the front door, and that's it, and.
So our, our plan, and with COVID, it's difficult, you don't want to make big announcements that you have to retract when things go sour, but our plan right now is to have the library open the first of October. For us, I think it's not only adapting to COVID, but also hiring our five part-time physicians. So we actually have interviews scheduled for next week, and we have rolling applications out there. So if you see on the city webpage, we are taking applications for part-time workers at the library. We have five slots to fill, which I think is great, and they are part-time union positions. So that by October first, we're not only hopefully out of the woods in terms of COVID, we're also well-staffed, because we certainly want to, Alderman Feps definitely get back in person to the library. We have a new children's librarian that's really eager to go with programming. We really want to have the library back to business as usual. So that's the plan for October first, and in fact, they are looking at programming already for that, and as long as the hiring goes well, we have the spots. If you know anybody, anybody interested in part-time work, tell them, please send a resume application to us, and maybe they could be part of the team.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Bill? Right up. You did volunteer for the J-Walk Committee, though, you can, you can be the chair of that.
No, I'll probably be running from the cops, because say downtown, it's tough not to J-Walk, especially where the post office is and where the crosswalks are.
I'm also appointing Mammon to the plate watcher.
Hey, Josh, I think Dan King has his hand up, I think of six to eight. Hey, Josh, I think Dan King has his hand up. I think if six two eight one is him.
All right, go ahead, Dan.
I just had one comment in regards to enforcing the out-of-state registrations and that with the building department. Since it is a civil matter, I think it would be cost-effective to use our city sheriffs. We do not need a police officer, but I certainly within the parameters of the city sheriffs to serve fines or notify people of that. We have five of them. I think we should take advantage of that.
You know, I have, I really never looked at using the the marshal slash sheriffs as sort of enforcement officers. But I will take a look at that. There's no question that that they are able to serve papers. Whether they be legal notices or whether they be municipal citations or violations. The question might be, you know, whether or not, although I suppose as long as they're designated by the mayor. Or in the Board of Aldermen, I don't think there'd be any issue with that. I think that's a good idea and it may be able to give us a little more. A little more.
The power to work, they can work. But it is since it is a civil thing, which is mainly what.
Yep.
I think I think that would be more cost-effective.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. It may require action from the board because it's not exactly in. In the charter in terms of the power of of the of the position, but that doesn't mean that we can't pursue it. And you're right, we have some folks right there in appointed off or in elected offices, right? That's maybe looking for some some additional service to provide. That's a good idea.
I I have a question on that, though. Usually when a sheriff, and I may be wrong, serves a paper, he receives some type of a stipend for that, correct?
So yes, normally, normally, when a when a marshal is serving a paper, they get paid for it. Now, we've been very clear in the past that marshals here, so our city marshals. You know, if you're if you're hired by the city, you know, you would also be paid by the city. On the Board of Aldermen, it's a little different. If you happen to hold a position and be an Alderman, you can't be paid by the city, so there'd be an exception there. But this is all different than serving papers, right? So a marshal doesn't come up with the fines. They're an enforcement officer. They're delivering it for someone else. So, you know, I'm an attorney, I'm going to bring a lawsuit, I'm going to pay the marshal to serve it, to legally serve that paper. So that service is binding in a court of law. And that's all the marshal does. They're responsible for serving the papers in a certain way. That can't be contested by the individual that ends up getting the lawsuit. So this, what Dan's talking about is a little different here. It's 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 beyond that. It's possible to do it, but it's it's not within the scope of authority that it currently exists. So it's something we could take a look at, but it's it it wouldn't be something automatic. Just because you're a marshal doesn't mean you could, you know, cite someone for jaywalking. We would have to kind of create a system for that. It's interesting and I think it's worth looking at, but it's not, again, it's not automatic.
Well, it wouldn't be for the jaywalking or organ offenses, but it would be specifically for people who were. Notified or caught by. Our, you know, the assessor or the building department has had an unregistered motor vehicle. In violation of a civil fine, because what we did was we just approved a civil fine, not a legal or lawful or police run. So you, we could still serve the papers.
That definitely. So say, say if if the building department or the through the assessor's office identifies that a resident has a. A plate that's not registered in a timely manner and we need to give them the notice of violation, yes, you could you completely can take that notice and serve it upon them. However, you have to be impartial to serve. So the problem is you can't be the same person that. That documented.
Right.
The unregistered or late vehicle. You can't be the same, you can't on one hand, report the violation and then serve the notice. You have to be an unbiased person. So that's that's a bit of a wrinkle there. But let me think about it and see how we could make use of. How we might make use of sheriffs slash marshals in that way.
Thank you. Thanks for that comment, Dan. A quick question. Is Galaxy A50 one of the Aldermen that put a put a message? Or is that just a resident?
I think that was the Assistant Superintendent.
Oh, okay.
He commented when Mr. Fips said that, so I'm not sure if that's him.
Okay.
No, Josh, it's me, Beth.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Beth.
I wanted to make sure that she had the correct attendance if for for some reason, someone.
I didn't know if my name was on there. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other last minute questions for Corporation Council? From the Alderman. All right, thank you tonight. Next up, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Good evening, President Schewert, members of the Board of Aldermen. Just want to give some brief updates. You have, you may have seen an announcement on Franklin Street to do a reconstruction of the sidewalks. And the original plan was to do the west side of Franklin Street down to the Riggs intersection. And I think. John may have mentioned this, but we we now have. Additional funding to do the east side of Franklin Street as well. So that in those entire sidewalks on both sides will be reconstructed. The guard shack, which many of you have a history with at the. Pandell site or SHW is being dismantled tomorrow afternoon. And I say dismantled and not demolished because it has to be carefully taken apart. Because of the safety, the health concerns. So that will go down tomorrow. And paving the way for the next step, which will be the demolition of Building 11. Which has been completely cleaned out. We will, we will post those pictures so you can see it before and after. And EPA will be back next week to to not complete, but to do most of their work within the next few weeks. You did hear briefly from Larry Saffron, who is the owner of Stelray. He's a forty-year, Stelray has a forty-year history in Ansonia. Being a truly wonderful commercial business, manufacturing business. And we have a great relationship with Larry and he's also, he's here tonight to talk about the the manufacturer's exemption. Which he's received for the past, I believe, twenty years. But in addition to that, I just want to point out that Larry is going to be constructing a 5,000 to 6,000 square foot. Facility for commercial space for my eye doctor. With plans for a possible additional site pad on his property. He's been a great partner to Griffin Hospital for the parking issues that they have. And I believe Larry, at some point, will talk about expanding current Stelray footprint. Right, hey Larry, how are you? Hope I got that right.
Well, sir.
Yep. We want to, I want to mention that Riverwalk, we're still waiting on the benches and the and the other amenities. As they are backed up and as soon as they're in, we'll have a ribbon cutting. We are doing a a study that will take us hopefully in the direction of Seymour. And we have had conversations with Anne Marie Dragonis, first select woman Anne Marie Dragonis. Who has also, Dragonis, sorry, who is also interested in connecting with Ansonia. And there is an opportunity to apply for some construction dollars. And we will definitely take advantage of that if we can for both communities. I think it's a great regional project. There's a build a better challenge on the federal level for some doubt, for some economic development dollars. It's another opportunity where we can expand our industrial parks all along the Route Eight corridor. So we will also be participating in that grant opportunity. And, you know, I I sometimes get some credit for some of the grants that come in and. It's a, it's a, I just want to point out, it's a team effort. And I honestly, the mayor and staff could not do what we do without this board. So I appreciate your. Concurrent with our projects and our grants to move them forward. For the most part, your concurrents. So I want to thank you for that. And also, you know, have our eye on the James J. O'Donnell. Senior Housing Facility. As you know, we partnered with the Housing Authority and I'm anticipating announcements on that. That's a $1.5 million rehab grant, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed and wait to hear on hear on that. John already touched on the Armory and in the Navy. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It was the National Guard that was stationed in the Armory. And you're right, Josh, it's really hard to keep up with the Village People. Theme we have going. I think. I think that's all I have for now. I'm sure I'm missing something, but that's all I've written down. If anybody has any questions.
Yes, I do.
Yes, Alderman Rivers.
I had a couple of people reach out to me about the Bella Vista Ansonia Apartments. And that phone number, no one answers and the website is down.
Yep, I have a, I have a phone number. And maybe we'll post that on Facebook, but I also have a phone number that you can call and speak directly to the owner's rep.
Okay. You can send it to me.
Well, if I can find it, yeah, I mean, we could actually just post it too as well. But yes, I will send it to you. I have a number. I did give it to somebody who also inquired about that. Thought they had changed the website address, but maybe not. Okay. Anybody else?
For.
I I do, Josh. Sheila, what are the plans? You know, I guess when the the announcement came out regarding what was happening up on Franklin Street. I was a little surprised. And I guess I was only surprised because. I don't ever remember hearing. Or anyone talking about there being a plan of what we were going to do regarding the sidewalks. And we talked about we're going to be doing different things. Like how how they're chosen. We got a lot of streets that are messed up. Down because I'm afraid I'm gonna fall on somebody's sidewalk. So what what is the plan? What is the?
So, I mean, we, the mayor has always had a plan for the sidewalks, addressing them throughout the city. Question is, you know, getting enough securing, being able to secure enough funding to do to do the sidewalks. The Franklin Street stood out because it connects not only Nolan Fields where all of our recreational. A lot of our recreational activities occur and our concerts, et cetera. But it connect, kind of connects Nolan Fields with the downtown if you follow Franklin Street all the way down. So there were two kind of connecting points and it's a main artery. For us, it's a main artery. So that, and and also, if you if you look at Franklin, it's it's a mess. And I know there are side streets on in your ward, Diane, that the mayor has been looking at to re to redo and reconstruct. And we can, we can certainly have a conversation about the, some of the side streets that we want to continue improving the sidewalks on.
Okay, we could just be privy to that. That's.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Questions from the Alderman for Sheila tonight?
Oh, I have another one about the IRA funds, but I wait for Kurt.
Okay. He's next. Last call for Sheila. All right, Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all the board members and others in attendance. Finance is working on preparations for the start of the fiscal 21 audits. Preliminary work is being completed in anticipation of our auditors arriving in the next few weeks. Our goal is to have the audit completed on time by the end of December. Work for fiscal year 2023 will begin the first week of October. It's amazing how quickly that has come back. Departments and commission budgets will be due to me by December 1st. We'll be planning the first ever financial summit for the city of Ansonia where we'll be bringing in all of our vendors. And department heads for two days of meetings to get everybody ramped up. For what's going to happen with the budget process. The mayor's budget is expected to be presented at a joint Alderman vote meeting. The second Tuesday in February. If you'd all like to mark your calendars for that to be ready. Over the next few weeks, the city will begin a partnership with Human Resources Consulting on an HR audit for the city. The audit will examine HR standards in the area of organization, operational delivery, performance measures, and benefit administration. Process is expected to take about eight weeks and upon completion, a written analysis will be provided as well as the option for oral presentation. Of results and recommendations. It'll be what we will use to build our path forward. To make sure that we are properly administering human resources for our staff. We are in the final stages of adding credit card payments as an option for residents at the window in the tax collector's office. Johanna and Gloria have been working very hard on this, listening to the reg, the residents' feedback. So they have put an aggressive plan in place, actually signed off on all the necessary documents today. So that will be coming on board. In the coming weeks, so kudos to them for their their efforts. Rich and I have been working with CBS on upgrading and standardizing our copiers and other equipment. We'll be moving our faxing capabilities from, I guess, machines that are plugged into the wall to a cloud-based solution. Well, this solution will save us some more money, or a small amount of money, I should say. It'll actually make us a lot more efficient and effective and allow people to fax directly from their workstations. They won't need to get up, walk to a fax machine and so on and so forth. So it's also a more secure way for fax to be sent. And also received within the city. We're going to talk a little bit later about a traffic study and show up to give more details on that. But one of the things that that kind of led to was a discussion about the agreements that the city has in place for use of the East Main Street parking lot. So I've been working with John and Sheila, kind of going through the contracts and analyzing them. We have three different people that rent space, all paying three different prices. The agreements go back to the early 2000s. So hopefully for October, we will come with a consistent recommendation for the Alderman. As to how we will charge going forward. So with that, that kind of closes out my report. So if anyone has any questions. I believe Alderman Stroman is chopping at the bit to ask a question, so.
I don't know about chopping at the bit, but. You know, being involved, especially with the Valley Community Foundation, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the IRA federal funds. How they can be spent. And what a lot of communities are doing around that. So my question is to to you, Kurt. Do we have a plan on how we, as as the city, plan on spending the money? If so, can we please have a copy of the plan?
There's no formal plan as of yet. We're starting to line up potential projects that would qualify. There's a list and actually I'll turn my camera on so everybody can see. If you want to look, there is a sheet that I have. It's two pages and it's very specific. When you, if you expend money, you're going to have to report on it. And in the reports, there's several dive downs that you're going to have to do and everything needs to be justified based on. One of the seven major categories that the Treasury Department has identified. And then within those seven categories. There's different subsets that things need to fall within. So just as an example for subset or for number three services, the disproportionately impacted communities. There's eight or nine different options. Educational assistance, early learning, educational assistance, aid to high poverty districts and so on. So you need to slot each piece in there. There is also another category, which is what they consider lost revenue. That is a calculation that needs to be done. Rich Bishar and I had to go back to our high school calculus. Try to figure out that, you know, we're about at the five yard line, use the football term since we're in Ansonia. Of determining what that number is, we need to have it approved, just to make sure that we have our numbers correct. Once we have that number established, that number falls. Um, just to make sure that we have our numbers correct. Once we have that number established, that number falls, those amounts fall to the bottom line. They can be treated a little bit differently. The other issue is because these categories are so tight. Um, that CCM is in the process of compiling ideas and suggestions from communities all across the state. So if we have an idea that we think works. We're sending it to CCM. CCM is compiling that and sharing it across the state. So uh, we're gathering ideas from them. As well. So there is no formal document as of this point, discussions are still being had. Uh, but we did, again, a roundabout questions. I know I'm going a little long. Uh, we did meet with Dave Morgan, uh, Sheila and I. Um, and he's going to be sending some information over to us about how we may be able to use some of these funds.
And do we, do we plan to make a formal plan that can be shared?
Um, well, yeah, we'll have to put something out there, but uh, where that will be and how that will be presented, I, I don't know as of yet.
Okay, I just think it's important to be transparent with the money and what we're gonna use the money for.
I mean, Diane, the only thing I would add to what Kurt is saying is. Is, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking a gift horse in the mouth, but we're not talking about a lot of money here for Ansonia. Um, and the other thing is, this is a, fortunately, our city has a lot of projects ongoing. Which some of the, you know, some of those funds can be used to continue without having to burden the taxpayers. So um, so some of our projects, you know, we can plug holes with the era funding ends, but. But I honestly, you know, you, you, you saw more money for Wakeley Avenue than you're gonna see in era funds. I mean, for, for a lot of the communities, yes, they have to pre-present a, an elaborate plan because it's a lot of money. And you probably want an elaborate plan.
Well, and to some of the communities. But some of the communities are required to hold public sessions. It's not an option. So some, depending on how you receive the money, what category you fall, you fall into as well.
Okay, but we did get $5 million, right?
Uh, well, no, we have 2.7 million.
We got half.
And we'll receive another, potentially, um, I'll believe it when it's actually in our bank account, another 2.7 million uh, next spring.
Okay, so it's supposed to get 5.4 million?
Uh, correct.
Basically, okay, all right. Sheila, I think that's, that's quite a bit of money.
I'm happy. I, I don't look happy, but I'm happy about it. It's just not, you know. All right, 5.7 for Wakeley.
Can I just ask a, a sort of an add-on then, Kurt, with, from what Diane had said, is that, is that, is there a loss of revenue in both rounds? So in other words, the impacts in 2020 and the impacts again in, didn't say 2021, and that money comes through next spring or is. I- is there bottom line, that same calculation that you were talking about that you and Rich have to do? For loss of, loss of revenue funds that can be taken out of that, some of that?
Yeah, the, the calculation uh, actually needs to be done over three, over three-year period. Uh, and you can improve yourself. Uh, but based on the way the calculation is set up, it's almost impossible not to improve yourself. So, but the money can be split over the two tranches of money. So if we were to use all 2.7 as an example, as a pass-through. Now, we would have 1.2 million of the next 2.7 million available as a pass-through as well.
Okay.
A- and the, you know, and you know, just to talk about transparency and things, the reporting for this is so ridiculous and so strict. That you have to have everything justified, every little receipt. Uh, you know, one of the things that we're doing as an example is, um, you know, we're buying gift certificates for people for vaccinations, which obviously is one of the big proponents of. Uh, of this whole plan. So we actually have to have a list of all the people who are getting uh, vaccinations, but how do you do that without violating HIPAA? So we're gonna have to get a letter from Griffin on their letterhead that specifically said, you know, these 32 people received. Uh, their second vaccination, they received gift cards, and we're gonna have to match that up with the receipts for the 32 gift certificates and so on. So I, I mean, it's, it's a lot of uh, this, this money could, and just to rest, reassure everyone. This money just can't be blown, it just can't be spent willy-nilly. There's a lot of rules. Um, I mean, I have probably four or 500 pages on my desk of just rules and restrictions and everything that we, we need to follow.
Thank you, Kurt.
Oh, okay.
Other questions for CFO Miller tonight from the Alderman? All right, hey, you got off easy.
I know, I like this.
All right, let's see. Um, I don't see any. They normally speak, so we'll skip. Um, and um, Alderman Fitz mentioned the superintendent, uh, thoughts are with him. And I think that's it. And are there any other public officials I missed? Did that last time? So we'll move on to uh, committee reports, starting with the finance committee.
Make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Alderman Mamon. Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Second.
Second by Rivers, all in favor?
Uh.
Hi.
For abstentions. All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Um. Let's see, brother, committee, ordinance committee, um, Joe, you want to take that up under the?
Yeah, it makes more sense.
Skip that. Um, fire, Joe, do you have an update this month?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Alderman Cassetti for the Fire Department. Reporting on a period of uh, 8:1 to 8:31. Uh, department uh, call activity is as follows. Uh, motor vehicle assists were 14. Carbon monoxide investigations were four. Smoke or odor investigations were three. Uh, vehicle fires, one. Structure, which are building fires, there were two. Structure delayed ignition was one. Structure cooking fires were 20. Alarm system activations were nine. Natural propane or gas leaks were three. Uh, fuel spills, one. Uh, system false, uh, false alarms were four. Mutual aid, which was automatic aid for four. Electrical hazards were three. Miscellaneous public service good intent was five. And uh, water leaks were, were three. It was a total uh, calls for the period were 77. And that's the, that's the complete report.
Yeah. Um, we have the uh, Temporary Regional School Study Committee.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just before I do that, I just want to say it has been an extremely busy summer for the Fire Department, so I just want to say a special thank you. To all of our volunteers out there that have been doing the hard work, as Joe pointed out, you know, 77 calls uh, in August alone, but that number is. Well understated over the course of the summer. It's been a very, very busy summer. So, um, but that said, uh, the Temporary Regional School Study Committee met. Um, earlier this month. Um, some interesting discussions. We're meeting again on the 28th, I believe. Um, to sort of get, we'll get down to the nitty-gritty. We're talking about governance, we're talking about finance, we're talking about equalization. We're hopeful um, that a determination as to feasibility will be done in the next probably. 60, maybe 75 days, depending on the schedules of, of the members, because um, pretty much everybody that's on the committee is an elected official or. Um, running to be an elected official, so I'll put it that way. So it's, it's gonna be a busy couple of months, but we have, uh, we're gonna tweak the schedule a little bit. It's, we're moving, uh, one of the suggestions was at our next regular meeting, we're gonna um, vote on this, but to move. Um, we were meeting on, on Wednesdays, I think we're moving that, that date back to Mondays. Uh, if I'm remembering correctly. So there's a little bit of tweaking the schedule to allow more members to be there, because we had a warm problem. For a couple of meetings, for a couple of timeframes over the summer, but we're down to the nitty-gritty. I encourage everybody to come out. Um, give me a call if you're interested, text me, call me. I'm happy to fill you in as to where we are and what's going on, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Josh, I've got a question for Joe.
Go ahead.
Joe, do you have a drop dead date on uh, your commission?
We do. Um, we actually run out of time in February of next year. So we are appointed for two, two-year terms. The second term was approved by this board and the Derby Board of Aldermen. So our timeframe is actually in February of uh, 2022. However, myself and my co-chair in Derby, Jim Gildea, um, we're, we're confident. That we're probably gonna have a feasibility determination, I'm thinking in November. Um, because if it is feasible, we still have to send the report to the State Board of Education, which then has to fast-track it for approval. Um, because we need to have it back before that drop dead date in February, otherwise we need an extension that can only be granted by the legislature, so. Um, that's kind of our timeframe, which is why, um, talking with council up at the State Board of Ed, he has, he had pretty much told us that if we're not there by the middle of. November, we're gonna have to start talking to our state delegation about an extension. Um, or the committee may die on the table, so.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'm just looking down this, this list here. I, I see that some of the people uh, who, who report on these um, monthly are not here, but. I'll just rip, there, is there anyone that wants to report on anything? WPCA, uh, Housing Authority. Arms, Public Works, any, any subcommittee reports on any of those? All right, end of committee reports, we'll move on to municipal reports. Let me just find my paper here. Uh, so first one, boat recommendations, the, the uh, um, Board of Apportement Taxation did not meet in September. So you did not have a, a report in your, in your packet. So we'll skip to the land use report uh, for July. Motion to accept that.
So moved.
Motion, Yemen, second by, heard a voice, Cassetti.
Okay, either one.
Yeah, you got beat out there, Chicago. Uh. By Yemen, second by Cassetti to accept, um, to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Again, I'll note, uh, as I do every month, revenue. For, for, for the Building Department for August 2021 only was $20,779.68. So, continue bringing in, bringing in money. Um, we had the tax collector report and the request for refunds. For August. And the amount of, um, let's see, they have the tax collector report and then the um, refund amount in the amount of $21,416.07. Uh, if found to be correct. The motion to.
Most.
Accept those?
I make them.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Yemen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, motion passes unanimously. Accept those reports. Uh, accidents and claims, we have three, um, three claims, 08211012. This is Carter Mario Law Firm versus City of Ansonia, RE Mr. Conklin Personal Injuries. We have 08211013. Benchmark Municipal Tax Service versus Cook Industrial Associates and City of Ansonia. Regarding 109 Central Street and 09211014. Benchmark Municipal Taxers versus Warren R. Hall and Kimberly Krennic. In the City of Ansonia, RE 36 Ben Street. Those are the three claims.
Motion for counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to counsel by Yemen, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously again. All right, we have one communication that was mentioned uh, by a couple of the city officials, so I'll let them handle that. This is communication number one. Uh, the request of transfer from Municipal Parking Fund, I don't know if Sheila or Kurt or John or all of you wanna?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off, Mr. President, and then John and Sheila can jump in. Uh, so we had a traffic study done on East Main Street, and Sheila can obviously elaborate a little bit more. Uh, on the value of that for the economic development reasons. Uh, but what we like to do is take uh, $17,300 uh, proceeds from the Municipal Parking Authority, which is the responsibility of the Alderman. To pay for that uh, traffic study. The vast majority of this money comes from the, uh, we'll call it the rent that we receive from the East Main Street parking lot. I think it makes sense to use uh, those resources to address uh, this need. So the money will come from that and go directly uh, into the professional services lines for economic development and be paid uh, from that line.
Kurt, I know I, I asked you, um, when I saw you, uh, but could you remind me what, what the balance is in that account?
Uh, it's about 220,000, give or take.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Uh, Sheila or John, any, uh, comments on this?
Nope, I think Kurt said it all. You know, legally, uh, the Board of Aldermen has to act on this. But it's quite a good matchup of funds for the use, right? I mean, it's uh, perfect.
Perfect, all right.
More than appropriate.
All right, we have a motion to approve this. Uh, a motion by Cassetti. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Stroman. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Can I just inquire, does this ha, does this have to also be approved by boat?
Uh, yeah, well, you guys, you guys approve the usage of the money. And then boat needs to approve the transfer from the account that it's in to Sheila's. Uh, professional services line. So I've already had some quick conversations with two of the members of boat. So what we will do is, uh, I'll sign off tomorrow on it, and then they'll officially approve it uh, when they're meeting in October.
Okay, is it, is this the one account that, does this, is this the, I, I guess I'm just asking chronologically, is this the correct order? Is it supposed to go to boat first? Or is it supposed to come to us first? Because I know most other things go to boat first and then come to us as.
Uh, it, it would need to go to you first, because you guys actually approve the usage of the funds.
Okay.
Once you've approved the usage of the funds, then boat votes to actually move the money from the account that it's in over in Sheila's account.
Okay, and then we'll approve it, and then we should approve it in October when it comes back again, Joe.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's just a little different, Joe, because it's not a regular, like, tax board item. It's, um, it's a parking authority.
Yep. Makes sense.
I've got a question or two.
You're very muffled, Dan, just to.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just saying that uh, all new money being applied to any budget line item automatically goes through boat. That is. What they do, and it should have been submitted at their last meeting, which was canceled, because there wasn't one single item presented to them. It could have been presented to them, and then we could have, because we're, we're just, we just agree or disagree with it. Um, they are the fiscal authority uh, to move money. It does actually, according to our charter, have to be approved by boat. So we can vote on it, and then it goes back to them, but all it does is delay payment of the bill that we have. It would have been easier to just go to boat first, like it should have, and we could approve it afterwards. And this bill would be paid within days. Instead, we're going to another month.
Bill, you had a comment as well? Or question?
Uh, yes, um, the traffic study, that, that's a finished document that we have right now?
I can, I can speak to that.
True.
So that's an engineering report for Lower East Main Street. That was conducted uh, as a result of um. The possibility of a large tenant. And, and how we can accommodate that tenant. So yes, there is a 25-page traffic study, which is in draft form, though, which will be finalized. There will be public hearings if there are changes to be made. If and when there are changes to be made. And I certainly will share that document with everyone here. And I also want to share that I've asked Dave Elder. Um, to do an updated version of the parking study that was done many years ago for Ansonia. Um, because it's needed, and he said he can, he can do that in relatively quick order. So just wanted to add that.
Interesting.
Don't really want to, you know, talk too much about. The purpose of the traffic study at this stage.
Yeah, understood. The other question, did I understand it to be said that there's $200,000 in the municipal parking fund?
Uh, yeah, give or take.
Wow. That's quite a slush fund.
It's a big fund.
But it's, it's a fund controlled by the Board of Aldermen, which is the parking authority. So you guys can use it as you see fit. We've, the only other time since I've been here that we've used this were to repair. were to repair some traffic lights in an emergency, when then Chief Cota, um, had to have those taken care of, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Do we, we ready to vote on this? All right, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so this request will be approved by us. And thank you guys for the explanation as well. All right, under resignations, we have nothing this month. Uh, we also have no, uh, resolutions. We also have no appointments. So we'll move on to ordinance number one, which was mentioned at the outset on the unregistered, uh, motor vehicles. So I'm, I'm assuming, uh, Alderman Yamman, head of our ordinance committee and corporation counsel, maybe tag team this. You received the.
I think we, uh, I think we went over it a little bit. I will say that, uh, we do need to make a change to the title. The ordinance committee would like it named, um, ordinance concerning untimely registered motor vehicles rather than unregistered, because these, these may in fact be vehicles that are registered, just registered in New Jersey or New York. So it's all about, uh, registering them in a timely manner here in Connecticut. So right, uh, ordinance concerning the untimely registration of motor vehicles. If someone could just make, um, that motion as we approve the ordinance, so the title can be officially approved. Other than that, I'll say that it's a pretty straightforward ordinance. Really, the meat is right up front. It's that first paragraph. There already is a state statute setting forth the time period, uh, whereby you must switch your registration to Connecticut. All we're doing is piggybacking on that and saying there's going, going to be a municipal violation in addition to a statutory state violation. So it allows us, if you violate the state statute, and, and if we could prove it, um, it allows the City of Ansonia to issue a violation and a fine with that, with that violation. The rest of the ordinance, what does that do? It simply establishes a process, um, to provide notice of a violation and to appeal it.
We have a motion to, uh, adopt this ordinance with the, um, with the, the changed title to untimely registration.
Can I ask, um, yeah, we have discussion before we do a vote on it. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Fortunately, I have family function last evening, so I missed, I missed the ordinance meeting. But I guess my thought was, John, I know we, we state that violates the Connecticut general statute, but is there a way we can list out what that statute actually is or something of that nature? So when somebody looks at that, they know exactly kind of what that statute says instead of having to go find it.
I mean, I suppose we could. It, it's common practice to not recite when, when cross referencing like this. It's, it's common to not recite the statutory language. Um, the citation is all that's legally sufficient. I suppose we, we certainly could. There's nothing that would prevent us from just spelling out what that is, although it's, it, it simply would make the ordinance longer. I mean, it's, it's really up to the alderman as to how it would be, you know, how you want it laid out. There's nothing wrong with doing it that way. It, I, I don't want it to be confusing. I don't want it, I don't want someone to mistake what the order, what the statute is versus what the ordinance is. Uh, but I'm sure there's a way I can lay it out so it recites. Usually, these ordinances don't quote language from the state statute. You just refer back to the state statute by citing it, Connecticut General Statute Section and so on. It, it's, it's, it certainly would, would help people understand what is requested of them, but we also, you know, if state statute changes, we don't want to, we don't want to change the ordinance. So if the state statute is updated, it's automatic, right? If it's just a citation to Connecticut General Statute Section, you know, XYZ, uh, we don't have to worry about it because if the statute's updated, our citation still stands. If we do copy the language, then we do have to be careful that every time that the statute changes, we'd have to change the ordinance. That would be a possible complication.
We'd have to change the ordinance or just change the statute wording?
Well, we'd have to change the entire ordinance. I mean, that's, that, that's part of the issue why they usually do the citation, Diane, is because if the statute itself gets updated and you've quoted the language from the particular statute, that's no longer valid language from that particular statute, and it makes, it, it creates an issue for anybody that's doing an appeal and stuff like that to contest the validity of the ordinance and our ability to impose a penalty. So that's part of the problem, why they, you, you should usually do a cross citation like that. Um, because if the legislature does even, even a word fix at that point in time, the wording in our ordinance is not going to be the same as the statute is.
Okay, all right, okay.
So.
I just thought it'd be easier that way. People would know exactly what it was, but okay.
And I'll, I'll just, I'll just say for, you know, a, as I stated earlier, I mean, the, the, the purpose here is to encourage people to register their motor vehicles when they move into town. Um, if they haven't, and they're living in town, to register their motor vehicles. The goal here is not to penalize as many people. We, as you can read through it, there's a lot of outs here, notice, and then, um, first time violator, as long as they register and show proof of that registration, um, there would not be a penalty. The goal here is really, is really to try to get people to register their vehicles and, and begin, a lot of people move in from out of state and they don't want to register here because they don't want to pay the personal property taxes. It's trying to get people to comply with the rules of the state they're now residing in, so.
Right, but you know what? I just, I just thought of, if we do change the title and we make it timely registration, that might fix it. Cause I, when you look at it, it doesn't really, to me, say the issue is registering timely. So I think you might have fixed that by, John, you said that you're going to change the title.
So the way we voted it out of the subcommittee last night was that first part where it says unregistered motor vehicles, that would be deleted in its entirety. And then the second part, which will be the title of the, it would be the untimely motor vehicle registration.
So, yeah, okay, so that, that helps. That helps, okay.
Okay, I make that motion.
Chicago, go ahead.
I make that motion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman Rivers, second by, who was that? I didn't see it.
That was Mamon.
Mamon, second by Mamon. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion, uh, carries unanimously. Um, thank you guys again for your work on that. And the full text of this ordinance, um, updated of ordinance number one will be available in the, uh, office of the town and city clerk at, uh, City Hall. Moving on, we have a few.
Can I make one more comment? If we can do our best to try to get that, um, to coincide with the grand list in October, if we can try to get that published sooner or later, John. It's a fact, you know, obviously we have to do publication for it to be effective. If we're, if we're already sending the other ordinance out for publication, if we can try to get this on the same.
That would, to move that, yeah.
I think it may have gone out. Um, Town Clerk, uh, Beth Lynch, um, did the landlord notice go out yet?
Um, I don't think she's here.
Oh.
Yeah, she did indicate she was having computer problems.
Okay, I'll check in that, I mean.
She was Galaxy 850.
She's here.
She's muted.
It has to be, each one has to go out multiple times anyway, so it's probably, you know, it's not the end of the world if it already went out. She may have, I know she wanted to send it out last week, so it may have already gone out.
I'm here, sorry.
Has anyone seen it? Oh, hey, Beth, did the landlord, uh, did the landlord ordinance go out yet, the notice?
Well, I was waiting for a response because as I told you, the cost to publish it twice for that and the other ordinance that was passed last month was $12,948.
That's, that's crazy. So as.
And I didn't, you know, I wasn't going to approve that.
No, I know. And as I replied, I think what we should do is we should send out notice of the passage, but refer back to the, um, city website and have the full text of the ordinance published on the city website. Um, just like some of our other notices, I think that would suffice modern technology, I think, could save us, uh, $10,000 or so.
Yeah, yeah, just the section of the charter states that it has to be published. So I just, I didn't want to, you know.
Yeah, I, I think interpreting it under, with modern technology, I think that the notice is published, and, uh, the link would certainly gi, give anyone immediate access who puts that into their computer or their phone to actually see the text. Um, I would ask the alderman, is there, do, do the alderman have any issues or concerns if we proceed with notice like that? Uh, because the difference between a thousand dollars and, what was it, $12,000?
$12,938.
I'd rather not.
No, I, I.
As a sidewalk.
And I would just add is that I think that, that's, that's appropriate. Um, I know that, I know the judicial branch uses that in terms of its foreclosures. Uh, with putting that information out there. So I think that's more than appropriate to include the basic information with a link or, and/or the citation to be able to go directly to the landing page where the document is in, in its taxes and its full.
So what we'll do, Beth, it actually works out better this way. We'll group this ordinance with the, with the landlord one, and we'll do it the same way. We'll spell out the changes, but we'll say that both ordinances can be found on the website, and I'll have Darlene get those up tomorrow.
Yeah, there was another one too, um, last month. I can't think of the word it was, right? Marijuana one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yep, okay. And then that's, um, food for thought for, uh, next charter revision. Need to change our charter so that we can cite that.
Yeah, I think spelling that out would be, uh, being on the safe side for future boards. But I see, given the, the, given the way, you know, the modern world is interpreting these provisions, I think we're fine.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm on board with the fiscal responsibility of not blowing it on, uh, newspaper ads, but.
Yeah. $12,000, that's a lot of money.
Thank you. Thanks for helping the brakes on that one. So, um, all right, so that's a good plan. So move on to new business. Uh, first item, new business, Stelray Manufacturing. Um, and we have our two guests who've been here since the beginning, uh, Larry and Diane, and we have, um, uh, City Hall staff as well. I don't know how we want to handle this, uh, discussion and possible action. So there was, there was a beginning of this in public session, and we just, it's, and under new business, so.
I think Larry does a good job of sort of, uh, defining what the issue is, and we can chime in and support you, Larry, if need be.
Yeah, uh, thank you, thank you, Board of Aldermen for allowing me to speak this evening. Sheila, thank you for your kind words earlier and words of support. I appreciate it, thank you. Um, so I am the Larry Safra, and I'm the president of Stelray.
Because students. Can you mute?
Chicago mute.
Can you mute everyone or, okay?
I'm, uh, Larry Safra, I'm the president of Stelray Plastic Products on Wyclie Avenue and Westfield Avenue. I'm a commercial property owner of, on between 133 and 151 Wyclie Avenue and 50 Westfield Avenue. We've been in town for 43 years. My family has been commercial property owners and operators of Stelray Plastic Products. We employ over 50 people, I think 53 people approximately at this point. Certainly consider ourselves upstanding business operators and, and prompt taxpayers never really have any, any issues. Uh, but we have an issue now, uh, that I'd like your attention on regarding, uh, the 2019 tax year uh, and personal property tax that we've always been exempt from, uh, filing the M65s, uh, filing declaration of personal property and then, uh, submitting the, uh, property listings. Uh, and I've never, we've never paid this tax. I think there's a small percentage we pay, but, uh, generally speaking, we, we, we've always been in the 43 years, certainly as far back as I go, we've never paid this tax. Uh, so the City of Ansonia is looking to collect what started out as, uh, $33,000 tax bill for 2019, and since it's escalated, I think I, last number I saw was like 47,000 between, uh, interest and penalties and collection fees. We actually learned of it this summer through, through a collection agency. I was frankly very embarrassed and just really annoyed by it all. Uh, I thought the exemption continued, and I, I think it did, and I, I started looking into it. Uh, and in fact, I personally delivered the Declaration of Personal Property to City Hall in, uh, November 1st of 2019. I have all the paperwork that shows it. Uh, so City Hall received all that proper paperwork. Where I think things came apart a little bit is, uh, we neglected, at least for the time being, to submit the uh, machinery and equipment listing. Uh, and it was turned back to our CPA firm. Diane is, is with us tonight, and Diane will, will back me up and, uh, fill in some of the missing piece of information. But in, given all things that transpired in the end of 2019, and then 2020, of course, the pandemic hit, and Diane's office was trying to communicate with, uh, Marcia at, uh, the City Hall, and then I, I believe Marcia, there was a, a change in tax assessor at some point during the pandemic. But I know Diane's office tried very hard to connect with City Hall and Marcia's office, uh, to, to get this resolved, and, and just, it didn't get resolved in a timely basis. But they did eventually receive that machinery and equipment listing, and that's, that's really all that was missing. The declaration was filed on time. We've never paid this tax in, I'll say, 43 years. To think that, that the city, that the City of Ansonia was going to collect this tax and looking for $33,000, I just, I just don't get it. It just, you know, okay, maybe there was some slip up, but it was during a pandemic. There was, there was problems on both ends. City Hall was closed for an extended period, period of time. There was a change in your assessor's position. These were extenuating circumstances. Uh, and I just don't see, I don't understand Ansonia taking such a strong position on this.
Larry, also, can you just, you know, the list doesn't really much change from year to year? Is, am I correct in saying that, like we?
Yeah, yeah, right. There's, there's minimal changes. So Ansonia had, so, you know, we, we filed 2018. That was, the exemption was accepted, uh, 2019, there was a problem. 2020 was filed and accepted with the exemption. So you had ordering years with very similar, uh, machinery and equipment listings, so it's not like there was much missing information at all, if any, maybe some minor adjustments.
So it's information the city already had on file, is important to point out. So this is information, schedules that were already in the assessor's office. They, they did pre-exist. They just needed to be updated.
Yeah, I, you know, I just don't understand the, the city taking such a strong position. I, I just, yeah, there's such a long history to this with my company. Uh, I don't understand where the city's coming from.
I think, uh, Larry, that the tax assessor is saying that he can't by statute, um, override this, but he could. Um, both the tax collector and the tax assessor, with this board's approval, they, um, it would, I guess, I don't know, John, supersede.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, they're looking for us basically to, um, to, to make the decision here. Um, you know, you have the ability to make an exception to the rule. Um, they themselves don't have the ability to operate out of their authority.
So, can I just ask, has, have, have you guys at City Hall confirmed that this exemption has been given every year?
That's everything is, everything is, yep, everything that's been recited is accurate.
Okay, so, a, and is it confirmed that we now have whatever the paperwork was that was missing from the specific package?
Yes.
Okay, and it, is it, and, and John and Sheila, you guys have confirmed that it's essentially the same paperwork year after year, and it was just a, a simple oversight?
Yep, it's essentially a simple, it's an oversight on the part of, uh, the accountant. I, I believe, you know, understanding this from, uh, from, uh, you know, what we're being told, but at the same time, you know, we did have a changeover in assessors. So there was some, you know, it's possible that some follow-up that could have taken place didn't take place because we were simply in flux at the time. So were you going to make that motion? What things, the things could have been different if we, uh, if, if the change in assessors did not occur.
Yeah, let's just.
This, this sounds like a no-brainer, guys, so.
Can I just? Can you just include in your motion, Tony, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just, just to be clear that you are directing the tax collector and the tax assessor because, you know, just because you need to do that, like.
Okay, Tony, you want to do it or you want me to do it?
Go ahead, Joe, you, you, you kind of chimed in, but I'll, I'll jump right behind you with a second.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to direct the tax assessor and tax collector to waive all taxes, uh, with regards to this manufacturing issue and oversight of paperwork for the tax year 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passed unanimously. Thank you guys for coming tonight and, and.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. All right.
You all.
Goodnight, Diane.
Bye, Larry. Bye, Diane. Bye-bye, thank you.
Yep.
All right, the next two items are, are both. All right, the next two items are both, um,
What are you doing, man?
Paper on your microphone.
My my cushion sunk on my seat and I'm falling into my falling into my couch, but, uh, uh, the next two items, uh, number three, number three are both bid awards. And I was thinking maybe we could, we can at least talk about these together, vote on them separately, but Sheila, do you want to take these? Bid award, number two, nature center, Bay Restoration.
Yes, Bay Restoration was the low bidder for the Ansonia Nature Center roof. And, um, sometimes we don't have good luck with the low bidders, but they come with glowing recommendations. Um, the architect who is on this project and the engineer have checked out their references and, um, and they seem to have a good track record and we're hoping that this board, um, uh, allows us to award the bid to, oh, to Bay Restoration, the Nature Center Roof project.
I'll make that motion to award the contract to Bay Restoration.
I'll see if Milford, all right, motion by Rivers, second. Cassetti, any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Or abstaining? All right, motion carries. All right, the next one is from the RFP for road improvements for eight roads.
You want to take that or do you want, would you like me to speak to it?
I want you to keep going, Sheila, you're rolling.
All right, thank you. So, um, I don't have the bid sheets in front of me, but, um, Pepe, F Pepe Construction was a low bidder if you factor in the ordinance that was passed, which which gives a ten percent, which allows us to reduce their bid number to by ten percent because they are an Ansonia taxpayer or and or Ansonia resident. And that's what the bids, you should, you'll see the bid spread and that's what the bids reflect. And so we're asking for this board's approval to award the bid to F Pepe Construction.
Um, can I get a, um, a, uh, discussion? Do we have the numbers? Because I mean, I'd I'd really like to hear the, um.
You don't.
Yeah, you, they were in the packet, all the, all the bids were in there.
I think I.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, no, I got it.
I can read them out if you.
I can see if I can quickly find it to put it up here, but. September tenth, twelve fifty-six PM, Chicago.
Can, um, can we get a site? What is the citation to the specific ordinance? Sheila, do you guys have that or John, do you have that? Or can you get that to me?
John? Yeah, I believe that's, hold on, I probably could pull that up.
And Sheila, are you saying then that the owner of the company lives in Ansonia?
I I'm saying the owner of the company owns property in Ansonia.
So the section is, uh, section two dash one ninety-seven, which, uh, if there is a local bidder, they're entitled to a differential, which, uh, basically makes them competitive with, um, with out-of-town bidders, provided they accept the lower bid. So if you end up winning because of the differential, you actually would have to accept the actual low bid. So you may have to accept the low bid if your competitor. It applies to, um, city-based bidder, means a business with a legal principal place of business located within the city of Ansonia. So that's the only thing. It it I I do believe that there would have to be enough property, uh, or possibly a, uh, you know, headquarters located in the city to qualify for city-based bidder to apply the differential.
So.
I put on the screen, these are the, these are the, um, five bidders and the amounts.
Right, but the address says Derby.
Right. So it is possible for, it it is possible for there to be, you know, a business address of one town, but it it still establish a principal place of business in Ansonia. I mean, are there facts that support that is the question? You know, what do we have to, uh, to work on to to see if he qualifies?
But what's the address? What's the second address then?
Is there a second address?
Is there an Ansonia address?
Yes, hang on. I will find it for you if you want to move on to the next item. Or you want to hold on?
Well, do we, so, um, I mean, it's really, it's down to two bidders regardless, it looks like.
Right.
Empire and and, uh, F Pepe.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess, as long as you can, as long as the city can verify that, um, that would come in, it's to what John read, the, the, um, that's the case, then the total amount would be one eighty-four, eight thirty-one?
Yeah.
That that's the application of his of his differential, but he'd have to go with the low bid. He'd have to be willing to do it at the low bid. And the low bid here on the sheet is one eighty-nine, right? One eighty-nine, two hundred.
Yes.
All right.
The implementation of the differential isn't the low bid. It's it's what the actual low bid is here and that's Empire Paving's low bid of one eighty-nine, two hundred. So the way this works, it's like some sort of LSAT kind of question.
I actually thought.
The way this actually works is, you know, that the, if you are a city-based bidder, you get a differential to make you competitive. If you end up winning because of the differential, you have to go with the, you have to be willing to do the work at the actual low bid. And the actual lowest bid is one eighty-nine, two hundred.
What if he turns it down?
If he turns it down, he doesn't get the, uh, does not get the benefit of the differential. That is, the, uh, section would not apply.
Or does he have to go at one eighty-four?
No, it says, it says he has to be willing to do it at the low bid. Uh, but I think the low bid would be the actual low bid submitted.
So what's the ten percent less Ansonia?
Right, I'm confused too.
That makes him, that what they do is they take his bid, they subtract ten percent. If he's then the lowest bidder, he gets the option.
Say he was competing with that one eighty-nine bid and say he's qualified as a city bidder. You know, let's say the low, that that bid comes in at one eighty-nine, he came in at one ninety. He gets the benefit of the ten percent, but he still has to do it at the one eighty-nine, do you know what I mean? So it doesn't, he he has to match that bid.
So the ten percent is just a qualifier.
Yeah, it's like a, it makes him competitive. But he has to match that bidder that he beat out, basically. So if he beats out a lower bidder, he has to be able to do it at their price. He he isn't forced to do it lower. That would actually, that may be problematic because remember, if if all these contractors are coming in with these prices, the lowest bidder says it's one eighty-nine. If you're forcing him to do it less than that, it may not even be possible to do the job less than that. So that's why the section holds you to the lowest bid. It it kind of assumes that that bid is the lowest credible bid, right? It that the job could actually be done at that price, but the entire section would be moot if you're not willing to do it at that lower price.
So, so in other words, if we award this to Pepe at the one eighty-nine, if Pepe says, no, I can't do it at one eighty-nine, Empire Paving would be the contractor that we go to.
Yeah, you don't wish the lower bid unless there's some reason to, you know, of course, unless there's some reason to reject any bidders on the basis of not being able to perform track record, et cetera, et cetera. City has the ability to decline or accept any bid in the best interest of the city. But that's how the differential works. I do think it's important to make sure he does qualify as a city-based bidder under the section. And that is defined in this, uh, section only as having a principal place of business in Ansonia.
Interesting, because I would have thought he would have put his principal base of business in Ansonia on the, on the, on the RFP. And Ansonia down as, you got a, had a business here.
So FNP Associates is a division of F Pepe Construction that is in Ansonia. They also have a one sixty-three O'Neals Court property. I'm trying to look for that FNP, one sixty-five O'Neal's Court is FNP Associates. But I don't, I mean.
Can we approve this, um, for for the ten percent low bidder with the caveat that if it's proven that he's, that's not verified as an Ansonia bidder, that it goes to Empire?
Well, I think we should approve it now.
Um, we should approve it. I see a lot of Waterbury, North Haven, Oakdale, Connecticut.
A bunch of old addresses for him, but nothing current.
And North Haven.
They, he is a Ansonia taxpayer with FNP Associates on one sixty-five O'Neal Street and they also own, I believe it's a two-family on one sixty-three O'Neal's Court.
That one says that it was only through June of two thousand thirteen.
Still.
O'Neal's Court is mostly owned and developed by.
Still. And then there's forty-seven Fifth Street, Ansonia.
Yep.
I didn't have that, but, um, twenty-one High Acres. Yeah, yep. I don't know, I don't know all the properties, but I do know.
Got his equipment parked all over the city.
Yeah.
On his own property. He pays taxes and all of these other bidders are all Waterbury, North Haven, Oakdale. They're out-of-towners. I think we should, we're safe sticking with Pepe.
Yeah. Well, if he can't do it for that number, then will, then do you want to default to Empire? If.
Yeah, when they pass a background check and have references.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so do we have a motion on this or no? Nothing yet?
I think we do, yeah.
I make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by.
Okay, um, oh, what, what exactly is the, the motion?
I want to make sure, uh, motion to award to Public Construction LLC. Uh, unless he turns it down, then in which case you you would go to the next bidder. Is that, is that the process, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion and the second. Any other last minute discussion on this?
I've got just one, one observation, Josh. This is concrete, this is asphalt paving, right? All these streets. Because the, uh, on the, uh, agenda, it says concrete.
Well, by two minutes, concrete.
Huh?
Called by two minutes, concrete. It's asphalt.
Same.
Asphalt, yeah, exactly.
Yes.
It'd be nice if we started making streets with concrete because they last a hell of a lot longer, but. They cost a little bit more.
Easier on the tires too.
It would be great. Love it.
Okay.
All right, so can we have that in the motion, um, Joe?
Yeah, so moved.
For, for asphalt.
Asphalt. By two minutes, concrete.
Yo, I'm, I'm quite impressed with your, uh, your knowledge of, uh, McAdam. All right, uh, motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that bid will be approved, um, and that goes to the city. Last, uh, new business item, we had, it says, uh, senior center discussion.
Yes, um, you don't have a bid sheet in front of you or you may, I I thought maybe initially we had sent out a bid sheet, but the, the original low bid was Olympus Construction for the Senior Center in sixty-five Maine. Um, we subsequently expanded the footprint of the Senior Center and so that number went up. And then, uh, we were trying to do some value engineering to try to bring it down a bit. Uh, I don't have the total number, but, um, I I believe it's at one point two million dollars uh, for the Senior Center. And so, uh, just, you know, just to inform this board and and uh, we've been speaking with Diane about all of the options for the seniors and we do, uh, I believe we do want to move forward with this project as soon as possible. Uh, so just wanted to update you, um, still talking with, still talking to Olympus on, um, on sharpening their pencil, which they've agreed to. Um, and they've actually done some really nice projects, some really nice senior centers. So, um, they're a good company. And, uh, hopefully this board, you know, once we have consensus, this board will award that bid as well. Joe?
Yeah.
Joe, Joe, Joe and Joe.
Joe, you go. Uh, this is for extras that are being proposed or?
Uh, we expanded the footprint. Diane probably could talk a little bit more about that, but we we expanded the footprint at sixty-five Maine, uh, to to have a, include a gym and a larger community center. So as the footprint expanded, the price expanded.
And you're looking for an additional one point two?
Not addition, additional, but.
Is that the total?
Additional to the original nine hundred.
To move it to one point two?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's reasonable.
Sheila, is Derby kicking in? You know, we, we, we just, I'm looking at Diane shaking her head, but we just, uh, you know, we went through two iterations of, uh, meetings that they requested.
Right.
So that we could hear them speak. Um, and I'm, you know, and John could probably speak to this, but you know, they're, they're mulling it over. And so, uh, we just think it's important for the seniors uh, in Ansonia to have a.
Absolutely.
Have a place and we, we just, you know, that's a bonus if they, if they join us. If not, um, we're gonna move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sheila says, we're, we're excited to start move for, moving forward with our own senior center here. There certainly is an opportunity for Derby to join on. Right now, my understanding is that the Derby Board of Aldermen uh, may be reaching out to sort of poll, uh, their senior center members to understand what the will of the seniors is. Uh, but there certainly is an opportunity open for them and of course, we'd love, uh, to see them come along as partners in this venture.
Well, I I mean, I'll just add is that this is certainly information that would impact them as well. So if they're really, you know, interested in becoming partners, um, diet, what's been floated out in the papers in in terms of a hundred thousand dollar contribute or three hundred thousand dollar contribution, um, is that becomes one quarter of the cost as opposed to one half of the cost. So I I would certainly, uh, you know, encourage City Hall staff to reach out, make sure that Derby is aware of kind of where we're going with this and that, you know, that sort of time is of the essence. They want to get on board with this.
Derby's aware based on size, that would be a sixty, forty split. So it'd be sixty, forty for the construction as well as sixty, forty for the ongoing, uh, budgetary costs.
So they're going to be, so just unlike, unlike, that's their, that's the membership, Kurt?
Based on. Well, it's just, it's population.
Right, but not based on membership.
Correct, because it it's very hard to determine actual, um, membership because so many people are members of my, my parents are members of multiple senior centers. So, you know, could we do a, a, an analysis of that? Probably, but I don't know. I don't know if it would make sense because you know, if we open this, obviously, everybody from Derby is gonna come over versus um, the people that are members. Now, how many people are not members but will become members because it's a new facility? So I think we just use the raw, um, population numbers. Easy thing because the cost should be spread out across all taxpayers, not just seniors.
I I'm a senior and, uh, I think, you know, paid enough dues to to get to this point. We deserve a good, we deserve a great senior center. And as far as I'm concerned, whether they join us or not, we should move forward and get this done because it is the most important thing for for the elderly. And I hate to use that word because we are still functioning adults. And what we want to do is is have a great place for us to congregate and conversate and associate with each other and enjoy the the twilight of our, of our lives. Uh, I think we should just, I'm, I would make a motion to just move forward at this point. Even if you, if you haven't got the final figures together, Sheila, uh, I'm, I'm thinking, just go ahead and get this done.
I agree with you, uh, because I am almost a senior, so.
All right, almost two.
I'm almost a senior, but I was just going to mention the look on Diane's face when this subject came up.
Derby, just say Derby.
I know.
Let's go forward.
Yeah, the one thing I, the one thing I do just wanna bring up to everybody, so everyone is aware, um, the initial budget and the initial set aside for funds was four hundred fifty thousand. Uh, currently sits-
Five hundred, Kurt, oh, five hundred, Kurt.
Yeah, but there's four hundred fifty thousand of it left. Um, so this, these projections are about one point two million, so we are in the process of trying to identify the needed eight hundred thousand to be able to move forward, but we are talking, and I apologize, I'm attacking a fly. Um, we are in the process of planning to move forward with or without Derby, and if Derby comes in, uh, then it just lessens the load for the residents of Ansonia.
Um, but hold on, hold on. A question.
When?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no.
We're not, okay.
I, I respect my elders, go ahead, Chicago.
I was just gonna ask you that the money that we got coming in, I mean, could that be used for that?
Which ended up coming in?
The, um,
The ARP.
The ARP funds. Potentially.
Okay.
All right.
For health and wellness.
So, um, we asked if it is a building of a facility like this is technically not eligible through the ARP initial, um, uh, I, I guess buckets. This amount would have to come through the lost revenue section?
You're, you're gonna have a hell of a time trying to prove that, though.
Trying to prove how it-
The lost, the lost revenue was going to fund this, this initiative at one point two?
Well, it, it's a calculation, right now, we're, the number's about three point nine million of lost revenue, so we have more than enough available.
Okay, okay, can we take a step back and let me ask a question? So, w- we, we originally said five hundred, and we were kinda toying with that idea. N- not only, when did it go to nine hundred thousand? When did it come to one point two? That's a pretty big jump, you, you're talking two and a half times the original budget.
Right, but Tony, let me make a statement, and Sheila and John can say whatever. But when that five hundred thousand dollars was put out in the budget, I don't think there ever was a analysis done on how much it was gonna cost to build a new senior center. I think that five hundred thousand was, I'm just saying it, was a number that was thrown out there.
That's right.
It was there when it was announced. I asked that question ten years ago, whenever the timeframe was, how you come up with five hundred thousand dollars? No one ever did an analysis of how much the cost was gonna come. So now, when we finally get into this process, we get a, a year or so, about a year ago or whatever, we came up with the nine hundred thousand based on we're pretty, we're gonna use over at sixty-five Main Street. What in happening is, we needed some additional room, so we took a community center. I mean, one of the community rooms, not so much to gym, Sheila, because we always said we needed to have a place for the folks to do exercising.
Right.
We're gonna use him from the police department. What we were told by the architect was that because of the cost of when he first did that, when he first did the original nine hundred thousand, the cost now has escalated. Plus, we added on an extra room, which now made it that one point two million dollars. But Tony, there was never an assessment done of how much money we truly needed to do a senior center.
Well, I could say that, that maybe before COVID hit, you could have probably gotten it.
I told you that, but I, if you guys remember, I stated that when we talked about the referendum with the police department.
Yep.
And back then, five hundred thousand dollars was not gonna be enough, because Sheila kept saying, we're not gonna have enough money, we're not gonna have enough money, but nobody could ever say how much more money we needed. But nobody wanted to put the money in for the referendum. So John even said, oh, we'll find the money, so now we're at that point, we gotta find the money.
And we will.
Yeah, our seniors are very important to us.
Somebody needs to start hitting a nail, somebody needs to start putting up a wall.
That's, but that's what the, that's what the discussion is about.
If I could, if I could jump in, if the Alderman approved the project and wants to move forward with this, then we will absolutely find the funds to get it done. So I just wanted to make everyone aware that what we have versus what we're going to need, and we may need to be creative with how we get there, but we will absolutely get there if the Alderman approved moving forward with this project. I have-
It should be, it should be said that i- in terms of the cost of the project, you know, this is not the first time we've been to bid. We've been to bid several times, we've worked with the bidders to try to understand what the conditions were, causing the cost to increase. Uh, we've really tried to make absolutely certain that this is the best price. And we are at the point where we're saying, look, this is the price, it is the reality, and our seniors matter to us. This is, this is something that we wanna be proud of here, uh, in this building. Makes more sense, obviously, to invest in our own building than any other place in Ansonia. Um, you know, we're at the point where we need to hit the gas pedal and move forward. And as Kurt says, um, there are multiple paths really for funding. Uh, we really luckily have, have some great opportunities, and it's going to be well worth it. And again, hey, we have an opportunity with Derby as well. Um, not obviously guaranteed, but, but it exists. Um, you know, we're just at that point where we, regardless of anything else, need to move forward.
And, and also, Tony, there was a component of the building that we thought was gonna be put in with the, uh, with the police department, with the, what they were doing, like the HVAC system, I think, and stuff, Sheila, you could talk to this.
I remember that.
We found out it wasn't done, so now that's put into our budget as well, but we thought it was coming out of the, the major budget of the police referendum. That increased it for us, too.
Well, I just wanna add one more thing, if you remember during the budget process, um, there were some distressed municipalities that the city was awarded, um, through the governor's office, um, one point eight million, we only budgeted a million dollars of that, uh, in the budget. So there's eight hundred thousand dollars of unaccounted for funds, because, you know, I didn't think it was prudent at that time to put money that we weren't guaranteed into a bu, into the budget, because that would be close to a tenth of a mil, and that would be a very reckless thing to do. So once that money comes in, that is unencumbered fund, so you take that with, uh, some money that we could even pull from the ARP funds um, that are considered lost revenue, we have more than enough to cover it, so. Uh, you know, the hope is that we build this and Derby comes on board and absorbs forty percent of that cost, but if Derby does not, then we have the ability to build the seniors, the senior center that our seniors want and our seniors deserve.
All right, so let's just-
What are you guys looking for for us? I mean, I agree with everybody that's kind of spoken, and, and that this is a priority, this is something that we need to do. Um, I'm, I, I guess I'm a little surprised, because it's the first time I'm hearing the sixty, forty split, um, with Derby, I was under the impression that, that we were gonna be partners and, uh, that, that they were bringing half of the cost to the table, as well as half of the operating costs. Um, but, you know, I think that warrants further discussion in a different, at a different time. With that being said, um, I, I agree with everybody that said, I think we just need to move forward, so what do you need from us tonight?
I, I would say if Olympus continues to hold their price, they are the low bidder. So it's Olympus Construction, and I just, I need the go-ahead to move forward with them.
Okay, make that motion, to go ahead and move forward with Olympus, uh, construction, as long as everything is over.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar, uh, all in favor?
Discussion, I have a discussion, hold on, hold on.
Further discussion, sorry.
So are, are we just approving a blank bid at this point? What if it somehow manages to come to one point four?
Yeah, then I would be back to this board if they can't, but I as, I'm assuming it's going down. Um, from what, from what our, uh-
Assuming the costs are going down.
Yes, I'm, I'm assuming their bid, they can bring their bid down a little bit. If it goes past one point two, I'll be back to this board, hopefully, I won't come back to this board to tell you that it's up.
I, I have another question, i- is one of the funding sources that you mentioned, Kurt, is there a potential for a tax increase to the taxpayers for this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially paying it in cash. Yep.
Um, I, I, I do think it's gonna go down, because, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda in the, uh, construction, and material costs are coming down, so.
Post in that, too, uh, Chicago. Bill?
Oh. I have a related question, so I was under the impression that the, the age for the seniors was going down?
It's fifty-five.
Oh, I thought it was fifty.
Fifty, we moved it to fifty.
Oh, it's fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you can go?
We got a lot of seniors in here tonight.
Let's turn off our screens, let's turn the screen. Older.
We got a lot of seniors in here.
As I know, I'm eligible, the budget's going up to one point seven million.
Chicago's been eligible for a decade, though.
At least.
All right, so do we wanna vote now?
Whoa.
Motion in a second. Uh, for Olympus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain as well.
Uh, Alderman Phipps.
And Mamon.
Motion passes, thank you guys for that discussion, I didn't expect it to go that, that way, but oh, there we go. Um, all right, that ends the, um, our regular session, and we, all we have is, we have three items from, uh, executive session.
Well, two items.
Three.
Oh, three, three, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to move to executive session.
So move.
Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
All right, motion to come out of executive session by Cassetti, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have three items in executive session, we'll take them in order. Uh, on the item of number one, Blight Lane, ten Bassett Street.
I make a motion to clean and lean.
Motion, motion to clean and lean by Alderman Rivers, second by Strowman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, uh, on the case of number two, eight twenty-four referral property next to Colony Park. What's your desire?
No more.
No action.
No action.
Who's, who's taking the question?
Who's, who spoke first there?
I don't, or Joe?
I don't, Joe.
All right, uh, motion by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right, and on the final item, eight twenty-four refer, number three, eight twenty-four referral, sixty-four to seventy-eight Plasky Highway.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
No action by Alderman Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining, all right? That is it.
To eat.
Dinner by Alderman Rivers.
Second.
Second by?
Mamon.
Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.